All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, September sixteenth. Like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide roll call. Commissioner Quinn.
Present.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand. Um, we don't have anyone for the invocation this morning, but I still have um. The prayer for elected leadership from Sister Connie, so I'd like to read that and then followed by the pledge allegiance. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits. Who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people. Listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures, welcoming those seeking asylum. Providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What would you comment? Seeing none. Approval of the agenda. Um, okay, so have a few additions to our agenda this morning. The county clerk has a polling location purchase order, a polling location notification purchase order. The finance director is um also going to to touch on the twenty twenty-six budget recap of where we are thus far. As our budget hearing will be this Sunday. We had a request from a constituent um to rescind a resolution adopted, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen fifty-four. So we'll discuss that under the county counselor updates. Um, and then we have a ten-minute attorney-client. Executive session with HR, finance commissioners, and county counselor. Followed by. An non-elected personnel services um from our treasurer. The subject of positions for twenty-five minutes. Followed by, and then the, the other one is listed on our agenda. So. Think with those additions, um, I would look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
So we second.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, our consent agenda this week has two sets of minutes, our special meeting minutes from September sixth. As well as our board meeting minutes from September ninth and then our finance directory deal.
Morning. Um, there's no payroll this week. The expense accounts payable uh total for Wednesday, September seventeenth is seventy-four thousand. Five oh two fifty. Out of that total credit cards is eight thousand six fourteen fifty-seven. There's no negative cash balances this.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second. Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So just three to zero. Hey, um, we have commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
Hmm, I don't have anything for today.
Okay, Commissioner Noel.
I have a N K E S meeting Thursday morning at Torrey. And then that night I have a meeting in Hiawatha with kneecap uh five thirty.
Um, I had chamber board meeting last week and um. Since, since our R and R hearing, um, just continue to hear from community members. Um, and I just want to say thank you to all community members, whether they agree or disagree with decisions being made. I've always held myself accountable and will continue to do that. And um. So I encourage anyone that has questions um to have asked the questions. Um, I'm always up for. For having those dialogues and being able to share where my head's at. So thank you for everyone that's reached out um and asked questions. Um, no petitions or proclamations, county clerk polling location notification um purchase order.
Yes. So uh with the point location change, we are going to be sending out a mailer to households with um active registered voters. And this is a quote to print and mail uh the postcards.
Okay.
It's forty-five hundred dollars and will come from the elections budget.
All right, I would.
Sorry, I was just gonna say it is, it is an estimate and I only got a quote. From one and I will be reaching out and getting other quotes to see. So that would be worst case scenario if I'm able to find it better priced, we'll. Address that.
And this will only be a one time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order um as presented by our county clerk.
So I've got a question. Why, if, if this isn't necessarily who you're going for, why are we approving it before?
Um, I think so that if I get, if I get quotes that are less expensive. I guess I'm, I'm asking to approve the actual printing, not necessarily the vendor. So at that as the worst case scenario, so that I can just keep moving forward with it versus having to wait another week and come to the meeting.
Okay, so it's more of a time crunch.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, that's what I was usually.
Yeah, they need to be sent out at least thirty days prior to the election. And so. I just wanna get signed off with someone, have them, it'll take some time for them to create them and have them generated and ready to mail and.
Okay.
So, um, but. I do wanna get other quotes to make sure that.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
Moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Very to secret. All right, next we have finance director, Mark Zeltner. Uh, he's gonna be going over the twenty twenty-five finance outlook update with a discussion on Board of County Commission authority. Um, consideration of P O to B G consultants, request for payment to S and M Sports Complex and the twenty twenty-six budget recap. Discussion of where we are as of today.
Yeah, that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so let's start with. I guess our twenty twenty-five budget overview. Um, this is the second time that I'm here kind of. Talking about this stuff with you guys. The first time was July. August was a little crazy. Uh, so I didn't make it for August, but um in September, so. Um, I think just highlighting a. Few key things. Um, revenue first. In July, we had about five hundred and sixty-five thousand of uncollected ad valorem property taxes. Right now, um, we're about four hundred and seventy-six thousand. So it keeps going down um on what is being collected, the same with vehicle tax. Um, as people register or renew their vehicles in July, we had almost four hundred and eleven thousand. Now we're down to four hundred and four thousand. Um, so just depends on the time of the year when people pay. Maybe they're not renewing their vehicle, whatever the case is. Um, our interest on checking accounts. In our budget, we had anticipated three hundred and twenty-five thousand. We're almost at three hundred and eleven of interest, so we will exceed um what we thought, which is good, because that just means. Um, if there's a shortfall in something else, the interest would help offset that. Um, EMS collections. Oh, and just back to the interest on checking account, that's just the money in our checking. That's not the interest in CDs or investments. That's just the checking account down at exchange. So EMS collections um through the end of August, uh five hundred and thirty-eight thousand out of six hundred and fifty that was projected. Um, you heard from Corey last week that he had thought that it would exceed the six hundred and fifty. Um, so but. Going through our budget for twenty-six, we thought keeping six fifty was a good number. So we're gonna stay on track with that. Um, and for sales tax, um, the three-quarters and sales tax that funds solid waste and joint communications budgets for August. We received one hundred and seventy-five thousand five seventy-five seventy-two. Average is about one seventy to one eighty. Um, so it's right in the average. It's not below the one seventy, which is good, but anything above one eighty would be better. But that's where we're at. Um, expenses. So if you take the full entire budget. We're at seventy percent used, which is good because in the middle of September, seventy-three overall is. Is the percentage. Um, so overall seventy percent, some budgets have less, some have used more than that. Um, in the expenses, we have two appropriations that have not been paid out yet. Um, forty thousand to the health department. And sixty-nine thousand two sixty-seven to extension council. The health department is part of the general fund levy. And we're gonna discuss that with um. The health department to see when they want paid out, how they want that to do since it's in your director. Um, the extension council is its own levy. So we um always have to make sure that we can't pay out. Anything that we don't have. So we need to make sure that because we appropriated. Sixty-nine thousand two sixty-seven to be paid in the second half of the year. If we have less than that in the fund, we won't be able to pay that out. We have to make sure that there's enough in there. Um, so I'll be coming to you guys uh with a purchase order later on for that. Okay, cash balances. Um, solid waste fund has just shy of seventy-three thousand in it. Joint Communications is just shy of a hundred and one thousand. So they're both in good standing after uh purchases have been made in September. And they're on track to transfer some back to reserve. By the end of the year. So I think my recommendation is we just keep looking at it, reviewing it, uh just making sure we're gonna be able to recoup that. And then I attached the fund status report, which is the balance of all of our funds at the end of nine twelve. Um, and it's broken in different categories, which I've kind of outlined for you guys in the email. Um, it's the same description I said last time, but just kind of. Reiterating it to you. Do you have any questions on any of that?
Last year we had a larger than. Expected non-collection at the end of the year. Are we on pace to do better than that this year?
Not by much.
Do we ever figure out what that, what is causing that? Is that?
I don't know. I don't know. Um, I had had a suggestion to visit with. The clerk and the treasurer about running a report to see who has not paid. And then just reaching out to those people. Um, I think you had done it at one point just to. Try to help and um. I think you did get some people that didn't know that they still owed or whatever the case was. Um, I think that it could have had something to do with back. Deeds that weren't. Worked and done, and so things weren't going to the proper owner. But I think that's cleaned up now. Um, so maybe in the future it'll be better, but that was last year and. Twenty-five is still twenty-four's taxes, so it could still be.
Still be that.
Half of those.
Mm-hmm.
Issues. Um, I know at this point in time, co- compared to last year at this point in time, our collections are better, but it's not by much. Some, yes, but, but we dropped.
Still collective pull.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it dropped from July to. At the end of August. Middle of September, it dropped a hundred thousand, so people paid a hundred thousand uh between those two months. So I think it is, it's doing a little better, but it's not where.
Can I interject there real quick?
Sure.
So it, the, been talking about the deeds, so uh. Before the publication of the newspaper, we ran a report and a couple of reports and reconciled them. And identified everyone who had, we thought some, I think we missed a couple, but who had been kind of caught up in that deed. Debacle and um. Those are the people, those people were all called. So I would say that. Anyone else that's left that. We didn't call um is, is not really, it's not related to the deeds.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Um, and kind of going with this, I shared with you the. Where we're at with the budget. So um you can see line item by line item by department. Um. If kind of how the expenses are going, how the tracking is going throughout the year. Um, Pat made. An email to us about spending and what the authority is, and I think you guys kind of wanted to talk about that a little bit. Um, what? Are, are we supposed to stay? By levied fund or is it by department that you can't go over or is it by line item? Because. If it's by line item, we are.
Yes.
Way outside of what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, that, that's really um up to the board of county commissioners how they want to deal with it. At the beginning of this year, at the organizational meeting, they uh language and uh directing departments to stay within personnel services line within. Their budgets, but that would be the only direction. The uh. The budget process in Kansas requires counties to use forms that are. Provided by United Department of Revenue. And those forms have detail down to uh. Major service areas within. Uh, within each department. And so. By extension, the, there's a requirement by state statute that uh spending the handle in accordance with what's budgeted. And so there is maybe a little bit of gray area. Um. In, in what's meant, because the same word, word fund, for example, was used in different ways. In, in. One way it's used to describe just four or five different uh. Major areas of spending and then in a more detailed way it's used to describe. Spending or for authority to spend within a much smaller. Range of. Big of possible expenditures. Uh, but I, I think that the answer is that it's up to the board and county commissioners on what specificity they want to require with that budget. And I know the policy that was done earlier had to do strictly with the. With personnel services line within the budget. And you're definitely moving your authority to, to do that. It, it comes with a trade-off because you have to do budget amendments to transfer funds between. One area and another. And so if you're using fund as the. To refer just to the, the really big chunks, then you don't really have to do much in the way of budget amendments to be in compliance with the budget law. But if you're using it in a more narrow sense, then it may be that we'd have. More budget amendments that might be necessary or will be triggered by using that level of specificity. But historically, the only specificity that we've had. Uh, has been within the personnel services line within the budget for each department. And you can see from the, uh, I emailed out the, the, the budget from last year and you can see that there is that level of specificity in every department.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's included within the forms. And so as I read the statute and the Attorney General's opinions that talk about them. That's the level of specificity that you may require of elected and appointed officials in spending.
So just to be clear, it's only those cate- categories that you listed as far as personal employee benefits, contractual commodities, and capital outlay?
Right, because those are the ones that are mentioned.
Okay, so all of, just walking through our process from. Beginning budget workshops, we meet with all of these department heads and. Our questions are derived by the line items, right? Like we go through each thing, line item by a line item, ask the question, get the answer, understand the need. And that's how we certify our budget. Um, then. So in, in my opinion, right, it would be holding to those line items because we specifically dial down that deep when we are certifying a budget like. We believe that this money is needed because we've went through it with, with our department heads and elected officials. Um, the report that Mark had sent us, um, when you look. At it per department, there are several line items that have already exceeded the amount. Um, of these for the categories you like laid out, so benefits or. Maybe we're eighty-eight percent of personnel services. So. From a commission level, how do we hold folks accountable? To those, like we're certifying the budget based on these line items. What happens? Because historically. We make an amendment or a budget that. Stayed accountable to themselves, ended up with a little more, so covered someone that went over, but I guess. Each department has their own way of doing things and, and to hold each leader accountable. I mean, for personal services, for instance, like. I think in your thing, it said that once the appropriation runs out, payroll must stop. Overspending is unlawful. Um, is that something, I mean, as the Board of County Commission, that we can give direction to our H R to say, okay. When, when this exceeds it, we can't be, go beyond this, shut it off.
Yes. Yes, be, and Kansas cash basis law was adopted, you know, right at the time of the uh, the, the depression beginning and the. The, the point was that they, as a policy of the state, you can't spend money that you don't have. And so it's, you're either going to have to in that situation amend the budget or not spend, but overspending is not legal in Kansas. You can't spend more than what's in your budget. And that's even if you have cash, you have to have budget authority to be spent, so. Um. So I guess the answer to that is communication and communication of the expectation or the consequence of. Of spending more than what's in the budget is that you're just going to stop the spending. At when, when you reach uh. When you reach zero.
So if I monitor. A department and I see that. At the end of this payroll cycle, the next one starts, they're gonna be out of their line item. Then I would tell that department and or them. Hey, this department's gonna go over. Do they want to make an amendment? To transfer a budget line, budget authority line item from something else into that? Or just cease it altogether, cease payroll altogether. Those are the two options.
Well, those are the options, but ultimately which of those options to choose is up to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, certainly communication with the department head would be.
Okay.
The, the basis for them making that decision. You know, there are some things that can be both, I mean, you, you can have it in there as a commodity, like if uh. Going to buy asphalt for a road or something, that can be a commodity, but it can also be contractual if you're going to have somebody else do it.
Doing, yeah.
Including it all in the price, then, you know, you can see some of those things can shift kind of pretty easily between. One of those categories and another, but some of them can't. If, you know, um, personnel is one that. Isn't really susceptible from changing from contractual to personnel. So. So my understanding was that. If they. Elected. Was, as long as they were within their budget, the commission couldn't. Step in and change anything to their budget, but as soon as they went over. Then the commission could basically maybe redirect funds or step into the budget. So, and the way I understood it, that was the overall budget, but if you're now, you're talking about a line item. And they exceeded line item, this, but they're within their total whole budget. This can a commission step in and enforce that by making decisions? Or changing things on the line item instead of the whole budget? You're, you're ultimately, that is you as the board are ultimately responsible for the ventures of the county. Uh, and some of that is, some of that discretion is shared with uh department heads and maybe more shared with elected officials. So that's a discussion probably that you all want to have together about. How to, how to handle this. There are not a lot of Kansas Supreme Court decisions on this issue precisely. There are attorney general opinions. The attorney general opinions have been consistent. With saying that, and the statutes back it up, that the attorney general opinions have been consistent with saying that. Uh, you do have the authority to enforce the budget, the amount to a level of specificity that's included in. The budgeting documents, that is those K D O R forms that have for each department, the, the different categories of. Okay, thank you.
So reiterating where we're at year-to-date, based on this report that we got from our finance director showing us that. Several departments are over the line items, such as the ones you, you wrote in here. Um. That are based on the statute, so whether it's commodities, capital outlay. Um, and, and this isn't, this is organization-wide, right? So um, I just wanna get a clear understanding so that we as the board know our authority um to holding ourselves a kind of. Accountable and then being able to communicate that. Um, in a manner that isn't challenged, I guess, based on our authority, so.
Well, you say it isn't challenged. I don't think there's any way you can do this that's going to have everybody happy with the decision. Uh, I think you're going to get pushback. Uh, from. Elected officials or from department heads, just either way. Uh, that doesn't mean that it's not legally defensible or legally correct. And I think that's really more of the. Where I would be trying to encourage you to be is in the, on, on solid legal footing, not necessarily on.
Yeah, no, that.
Criticized for this.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I just wanna be solid with, with, with that, that if, if we're questioning something, that we have the authority to question it. Um.
Right.
Because, and, and your email helped very much to, to show us that and, and to outline those things, but. It's just from the public perspective, you know, the fiduciary responsibility of Atchison County falls on three of us. And sometimes that's difficult when we get a report like this and see so many. Line items over, you know, and, and also are we all wasting our time during our budget workshops when we're setting a budget, when we're asking these questions, right? Like, we're, we're budgeting to a line item level, so. I- if you're not executing throughout the year to the line item level, it's just, i- it doesn't, doesn't make sense, so. Um, anyway.
I understand that tension, yes.
Okay.
I have an additional question, which is to get confirmation from you. So if they go over on a personnel service line item and the board tells me to cease payroll for that department. Even though those hours are worked already. I legally can stop that payroll and not pay.
Well, you work. You're going to be in a catch twenty-two there because you'll have one set of laws that say you have to pay it. You've got another set of laws that say you can't pay it. And when, when that happens, we're, we're going to need to regroup and. Discuss how to address those specifically, but.
Right.
You're gonna have a clash because you've got two separate sets of laws, one telling you you have to pay it. And one telling you you can't lawfully pay it. But we'll recognize that they're getting down to the end before, I mean. Hopefully. Yeah, we should.
Yeah, two weeks on a payroll, so you have to know before any hours worked because. Within employment law and legal law, like, I mean, the hours worked, they, you have to pay them if the hours worked. And you can't dictate, say it's a department that deliver, they can't tell them. Two individuals out of the fifty in that department can't be paid, correct? It's a.
Right.
Whole department.
Right, well. Yeah, I mean, I guess we have to look at the specific situation, I don't know that we have departments that have fifty. Employees, but they either have to be pro rata or it have to be. Sobbing at some point, so.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that because. Even though you guys can tell me that, we'll still be at a stopping point to be able to do anything with them.
Well, and I think that's another question for me, uh, and I'm glad that you said that is. If we have a personnel service line item that. Is already exceeded the percentage of where we should be this year. Um, but there's additional revenue that can be plugged in to to supplement that. Be- based on this email with the once the approach appropriation runs out, payroll must stop. So when we certify our budget personnel services, that dollar amount. And we exceed that regardless if they find other revenue sources, how does that look?
You'd have to do a budget amendment.
How does, my question with that is, how does that work? When this one budget is already in like a whole county general levy. Because the levy, the the fund itself. Isn't going over budget, we have enough money and other stuff to cover the overage. So like, how do I levy more money when we're not, when we don't need it?
I think you're, but you can't levy money during, you can't level additional money, you can level, you can levy. Taxes at one time for you. Um, I mean, the the point that you're you're mentioning, though, is the the difference in intention. At by the board at the beginning of the year when they set the budget, as I was saying. Traditionally, you have only held departments to that specificity regarding personnel services. It's not if there are the other parts of the budget, but you are within your rights to do that. Um, so communication with them of the expectation is the maybe a starting point for that. But if you're going to allow or if you're going to have situations where you're overspent in one part of the budget, not in another part of the budget. Think you're either going to have to do a, you're going to have to do a budget amendment to rectify that.
And as our finance director, do you have visibility to all of our? Revenue funds and you see everything, okay?
I would also like to add on the personal service line, it's not necessarily just what individuals are. Employed at with their rates, this is also unforeseen things like retirement with payout with P T O. Um, if he has, we have a bad winter, we have overtime and snow, that is all things that. Not necessarily each department can project how much is gonna be coming in this year, right?
No, absolutely, and we've had instances where we go over, but the it's communicated to us of like, hey. I'm gonna go over and this is why, and I think that's what we're trying to. Accomplish here is just setting consistent guidelines and having that process of communication so that. We're all accountable from every from every level.
I would just hate to hate to see it get to the point where I get orders from the board to stop payroll for a certain department. And um, it'll put me in a very. A bad position, I would have to seek legal counsel.
No, it's not a good situation to be in, communication ahead of time to try to stop that from happening is key.
Well, and again, I mean, thankful for this, these reports, otherwise we wouldn't have it. We would know, so. Appreciate. Appreciate that.
I have a purchase order to BG Consultants. Uh, for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For professional architectural and engineering services, um, we have. Already paid thirty-seven thousand six forty-six, remaining is fifteen thousand four oh four. And the original contract balance was sixty-two thousand eight hundred. Uh, but again, this purchase order is for nine thousand seven fifty, paid out of the senior village proceeds fund. The remaining in that fund. Is thirty thousand. Four hundred and four dollars. Uh, the rest of it is in a ninety day C D, um, accruing interest, so. Just have the rest of that contract obligation and then fifteen thousand dollars for grading. But we were not to exceed.
And that original contract was for, sorry, what services, and I'll have it pulled up right in front of me.
Joe.
Design and uh, M A P on the inside of the building, you know. And getting everything ready to bid. Design where the plumbing is gonna be, everything that that we brought in and showed you guys of of what we discussed and what you guys okay. This it has uh, nothing to do with utilities or any. And that would be bid documents and everything.
Okay.
And uh, I'm gonna be talking to them tomorrow. About a few things, we should be getting fairly close, we have to. Take the plan to the city. There will be a fee for that to get.
My only question is, so our engineers are reaching out to local contractors?
Okay, so this is a different one.
Okay.
So we have for the grading. To get a market study for this area. The engineers are reaching out to local contractors to find out. What the costs are for uh, moving dirt, lighting or whatever. Those costs are not shared with anyone. They are put together. And you would average those out to have a. Estimate of what it would cost per square yard to move the dirt. Take, so we can come up with an engineer estimate, because our estimates here are gonna be different than if you're in Manhattan. Or you're in Kansas City, they're just trying to get a local. Idea of what it costs to do this, so they can give us an engineered estimate. Because if they use one and it's. Five yards, five dollars square yard somewhere else, they wanna be more accurate. On what it should be, they're not asking people to give bids. They're just asking, hey, what's it, what do you normally pay for this, or what do you charge for this? And their names or nothing will be shared with you.
I'm just wondering, do you think that that's worth us paying for? Or?
That's that's in the, that's already in there, that's not something extra. But that's not with uh, BG, that's with Schwab B. But that's that's already figured in there, when they come up, when they need to come up with an engineered estimate, they're trying to find the market for this area.
Okay, so this this professional engineering. Is for.
The building.
The building. Which we're already into. Okay, so I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order um, to BG Consultants for. Nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. As presented by our finance director. It's been moved, do I have a second? I will second, it's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye. Passes two to one, all those opposed, same sign, sorry, passes two to one. So when we're in these contracts like that. Do you feel that some of the things we could do ourselves?
I think that maybe uh, there's things that are out of our wheelhouse. That we should not be doing. And I I I understand that we spend a lot of money with engineers, but there's a reason why we're done with engine. You know, it's just like the, and I'm gonna be talking to you guys about this very soon. It's like the plan of the grading, it's a lot more than what I anticipated. You know, K P H E, you know, we have to meet. We have to meet uh, their standards, we can't just put a pond out there and drive sediment pond around the. Or around the wash bays in the floor. We have to have a sand oil separator, then it has to go into to a sewer system. Uh. We're we're running into things with the water, you know, there's another company down the road wanting to put in water, okay? They're on the line before we are. All right, I've been trying to get them to find out what they need. Before we do anything, because we can't. I don't wanna go spend the money on a on a water meter. And then we're not gonna get it, so everything is very, very time consuming, and getting this other company. To move was hard, and I finally got them pushed to where they're trying to move, so we can figure out what what we can do, but. Uh. It's it's not simple.
Do we know a fee the city's gonna charge for? Didn't you just mention one?
Alright, so. I have that in an email. Uh, it's a certain percentage of the one point two million. Uh, but I I can't tell you right off the top of my head, because. And then here, we're in a unique situation where, uh, we have county road. You know, we're in the county for the property and everything is owned by. Was owned by the city, so then we have things we have to do, and like the city, when they uh. Charge for sewage, it has to go off your water intake, but we're not buying water from them. So, you know, there's there's a lot of things that. That are involved that it's just not. That's why we have engineers. And a lot of it has to be engineered, so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, the next item I have is a request for payment to the Ethingham for the Ethingham's uh, sports complex. Uh, to Trotloff Excavating here out of Atchison for installation of waterline and a new hydrant. In the amount of four thousand dollars. So that would go to exchange to be paid out of the. Sales tax payments.
I'd look for a motion to approve the request for payment as presented by our finance director. To U S D three seventy-seven for four thousand dollars.
To move to.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.
Um, I'm gonna pull up. What we've got left out of that five hundred thousand allocation, I forgot to do that, so with that four thousand, Ethingham site has thirty-five thousand. Two nineteen ninety-nine remaining out of their one hundred thousand dollar allotment. And the Atchison site has twenty-four thousand six fifty-seven oh two. Remaining out of their four hundred thousand dollar allotment. Okay, um, you wanna do a little budget recap, so. I think a quick little budget recap and then where we're at, so our twenty twenty-five mil levy is fifty-four point eight six one mils. Um, all the requests came in at sixty-eight point nine five one mils. When we left last Tuesday, uh, the commissioners got it down to sixty-two point seven six one mils. Um, and then asked uh, for some reductions in staff to departments. Um, putting in some of those reductions. Uh, gets us to. A lower mil levy. Uh, which is just. A little bit more than ten percent of the twenty twenty-five mil levy. Um, I think there is a few more reductions we can do. Um, to not have. A sales tax shortfall on the ad valorem property tax. Budget. It may not be, I mean, a project may have to be deferred or just reassess what needs to be done, but. Um, I think. Anyway, that's one option I can do. Uh, to to show you guys where we could be at. Um, and there's a few other different things that could go into this, I mean, you got the email, you can see what I'm talking about, but. Um, anyway, there's, we can get down below the sixty-two. That's currently publicized to the public, that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because um. From week to week without being together, it's like so many things go through your brain, right, and?
Yeah.
And. I think that holding ourselves to the sales tax that was voted upon to cover the two departments. Um, is what we should do, I mean.
Well, and here's the, at the end of the day, here's the deal with that. We can't. Control what we bring in, so whether it's hundred seventy to hundred eighty or thousand dollars a month, or it's less or it's more. Like, we just have to go with an average to estimate that, and then that. Is estimated between those two funds, those two departments, Solid Waste and Joint Communications. So if that's the goal is to do. Only do with the sales tax money that we have, then those two departments are just gonna have to. Operate on what comes in. So we might just have to go back and try to figure out. How to make it work with that much money. Like, if if nothing else is gonna give, then I don't see what other option you have.
Well, and I just don't think that the right option is to go over that amount when you don't have the revenue. And just plug it in ad valorem taxes, like these two are standalone based on this sales tax that people are paying. And if there's not enough revenue, then that's a revenue question, not plugging it into ad valorem taxes and let property taxes. Absorb that, because then for constituents living within the city of Atchison, you're paying for on a sales tax, you're paying for it. Maybe as a fee based and then add valorum, so it's just a lot to for them to to absorb um, with that. I wanted to cover appropriations, if you don't mind, where we were at on that. Um, of which ones we still have plugged in, and I would like to understand what we get for that allocation. As as a county. Um.
Okay, I might not have all the answers to that.
You're fine, I was trying to look up, so like. The conservation district sent back and it was very easy, like if you give twenty-five thousand dollars, the state matches that amount. For the county and the district, um, however, they did fall outside of the statutory responsibility. So they want, yeah, so I'm just trying to understand. The dollars, because when I read the statute she provided, it's to provide salaries and travel and and different things. So just having an an understanding of what those dollars go to.
Okay, so conservation district that you brought up is twenty-five thousand. Still in consideration. Um, back up to the top here is Northeast Kansas Area Agency on aging. It is two thousand six thirty-seven is their ask.
Do you mind if I ask Eric really quick, so with this dollar amount, cause I know what their organization does and they. Give money to Amberwell and they give money to Project Concern and they're like the funding mechanism for those things. Without the county contributing to that, would that organization still be able to support their? Their functions for Amberwell or for Project Concern or those?
I highly doubt it.
Okay, so this is like a membership fee to be taking care.
Yeah, and and I mean, it's. Extremely small compared to the incoming that's coming in through the old Americans Act. They're kind of like the umbrella that is over that directing. Funds to Project Concern to Amberwell and that, and.
Which I knew the R O I was much bigger than what we give, but I was just trying to understand if that give, like, based on the survey. Feedback of like, they only want us to fund statutory responsibility, that's why. I wanna understand so that I can explain when questioned, why didn't you do this is like. Well, this is pays off and and greater dividends to our hospital, to our senior citizens and. And all of the things, so thanks for that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, the next one is statute driven, K S A two dash one twenty-nine is to the fair. Um, their request was ten thousand.
And that covers their premiums, right? And do they submit documentation to us or anything, or do we require anything showing?
No.
What that looks like?
No, we can, but um, we haven't in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, the next one that's up for consideration is the Northeast Kansas Multi County, Multi County Health Department for eighty thousand. It's required, but not a predefined dollar amount. Uh, the next one is its own levy, which is the Extension Council, is K S A two dash six ten. We are to approve as submitted or modify, but required to approve a dollar figure. Um, what's up for consideration is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five thirty-four. Um, what's up for consideration is a hundred and thirty eight thousand five thirty four. Um, the next one is discretionary, Project Concern of one hundred thousand.
And on that, we've learned that if we do not fund that, then Effingham. Location will be shut down.
Most likely. I mean, I don't, there hasn't been a vote yet that I would anticipate that result, yes.
But that's what we heard from the board members that came here.
Yeah, but I, I don't wanna say, because the, the vote hasn't happened, I, I can't speak for the board, I'm on the board, but. That would be the most likely result, yes, and that has been discussed.
Okay, and the last one I have is Northeast Kansas Environmental Services. It is through our inter local agreement for ten thousand.
And what do we get for that? Dollar amount. Okay, cuz I just know, like, local contractors and homeowners and. Everyone pays fees to be part of that and to utilize the services, so for the county to contribute ten thousand. Um, what is it? Um, and I know historically nuisances has been something we lean on then for, but without seeing any results year after year, so. I was driving on one sixteen last night home from cross country, passing one of them, thinking, oh, I haven't heard anything on that, and there's been no. Progress, so I just wanna understand what that ten thousand dollars is doing, so we can continue to press on accountability.
Trying to, I pulled up the inter local agreement from twenty fourteen. To try and find it quickly, but.
They worked with KDHE, they're, uh. Been in the process of rewriting the health. Uh, sanitation codes for the county, there has been hearings on that, what was that, a year and a half ago, Pat? Uh, that they had the, not hearings, but, uh, the public participation and discussing them, then the KDHE came out with a. A new like standard or a template, so she had to kind of go back to drawing board to make sure that the. Uh, the. Uh, code that they had written was compliant with the new standard. So that's taken a lot of effort, then plus there's been some, uh, staff changes in the, in the same time, so. Uh, that's taken a little longer than what it should have.
So in the, in our local agreement, um, it says the fee schedule and allocation from each party. Serves the following purposes, to provide adequate salary for staff to plan, develop, implement, coordinate. And educate any KES programs and services. To acquire, repair, replace, and maintain equipment. To perform services such as chemical and physical water quality analysis, soil profile. Lead lead, sorry, lead paint assessments, office equipment and supplies and any other field equipment. To pay reasonably necessary administrative and support costs. For the operation of the office. And administrative and transportation costs associated with inspection. Corrective and education activities, and to contract services. And equipment as required by grant funding.
Do this admit a budget to us?
No, just the inter local agreement.
Okay.
Letterhead.
Got it.
I don't think it'd be a problem.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to see one and, and be able to understand what the money is.
Public's benefit, they, uh, oversee, uh, septic systems in the rural part of the county. Uh, they have assisted in the city of Atchison a lot, uh, with the properties that are. Outside the city sewer system, they come, uh, there's people that have small. Properties in the city will actually consult with any KES to, to design. And or, and or repair, uh, failing systems, um, so.
And I know they collect fees for that from the homeowner, so that's why I was just curious what our money went to. Which the budget would tell us, so, thank you.
So the total of all those appropriations is three hundred and sixty six thousand one seventy one. All that I have, unless you have something else.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, well, actually, ne- so, next is commission, um, we have, uh, the county councillor request for a proposal. Um, that, the. We have put together. Thank you. And we married this with the date after the date, whether or not you're selected, so that. You want to put in, um, we want you to have that opportunity. So we would notify on the county website, uh, receive proposals, um.
All the dates are, can be changed.
Yeah, I think we need to receive proposals after October twenty eighth, that way it. Being, um. Mindful of Pat's deadline to be selected.
Okay.
Um. So, I don't know what that date looks like. We could. Receive them. Uh, that's election day, so, at election day, we would canvass on November tenth, right, the Monday after. Um, so I'm just thinking maybe November eighteen. Right, so. Receive proposals by November eighteen.
Yeah, I, I think I'd like to do the seventeenth.
Okay.
The way I had all the time to compile them all prior to the meeting.
Okay, seventeen.
Eleven seventeen.
Well, and I guess for that, whatever date you would want, I mean, I was just looking at election day, we probably wouldn't. We usually don't meet on election day.
Right.
Because we don't have. Um, and that's the community needs assessment result day anyway, so, um. Okay, so. I just wanna make sure the date received proposals by is after October twenty eighth.
Perfect, seventeenth is a good date.
Okay.
So then, review of proposals would be the eighteenth through. December second, maybe, I don't know how many weeks you want. To review them.
I feel like two would be plenty.
That would give the board time to do references or, or whatever you need to.
And then a point by December second?
Well, if you're considering them through the second, I mean, you could, but. That contract award date will hold you to the second if you still need another week to figure it out.
Okay. So you.
So the ninth.
December ninth.
Yep, that would get one, two, three. Four weeks, I guess, before they would have to be here on January sixth. And then, um, it doesn't have to go out today, you guys can take a look at it. Uh, change whatever you want to. Um, it has hundred and fifty dollars per hour. The rate of pay. Um, there was. I put in there that the, tried to think of what you would want, um, I put in there that. The Tuesday, this is commission meeting starts at ten. Um, attend the meeting in person or via Zoom. It would, not all meetings would require attendance. I think advanced notice and communication between the board and that person would be, uh, communicated. Uh, it would be paid, the, uh, accounts payable contract. Last I. Could come up with.
Something I was just thinking of, you know, Pat has done work for like townships or not, civil township, so they choose to. Use his services, will they be subject to the same price, or I mean? Or will that be just any on our own, or how will that?
Well, to me, I think a township has their own budget, I think they should budget for their own.
You could.
That's my opinion, but.
Okay, I think at some point we need probably like, let them know that, 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 the structure is changing, so. They're prepared for that, because it's probably nothing included in any of their new budgets for, for that for themselves. Not that there's a lot of utilization that at times that could be.
What about the, um, other offices here?
Yeah, I think it's definitely communication between the board and all the department heads of. That expectation. But that's just me saying that out loud, so that's.
Oh, I agree.
Of course, but. Um, I think the theory was that some weeks would have less hours, some weeks would have more, so I just did an average of eight per week, but.
I guess what I'm asking is like, I'll reach out to Pat questions. Is this like, we won't be able to do that anymore?
Well, I think whoever puts in for this would keep track of how many hours they're helping.
But are we gonna be limited to how many times we can? Request help, or would we have to like, hold on to that information until Tuesday for the board to approve us to, to talk to Pat or?
Well, I think. Depends on the topic, um, if you can get help from a different source, resource, like, that we already get. Services from like Ecam or. Take work.
So you would rather us utilize the services at our entrance than to reach out to our legal counsel?
Think you should use all of your resources.
Will this individual be present for unemployment hearings that I have, cuz I usually have legal counsel represent accounting diagnosed?
Thought I had that in here.
Other legal services asked requested. In which. These requires commence prosecute some.
I mean, we can add a bullet to say assist the HR director in.
Well.
So it says advise on individual labor and employment matters.
Give advice on legal questions that arise for the board and its officials on legal matters.
Yeah.
And as officials, so it's fine.
Okay.
I missed the end of the official part. We're so statue driven, that. I mean, a lot of interpretation, though. Are there any other changes outside the dates that were proposed?
No, I'm not. Read it, read it, I mean, it's kinda hard, but.
Would wanna come back to it next week?
Yes.
Something even. Even if we did the twenty third on here, that's not, that's not gonna.
Okay, so, September twenty third.
Will you add that to the agenda for next week, please?
Okay, we have a, next is the consent to cleanup activities. Um, this was for the program that we're working with KDHE on, um, and. Mister Henderson has reviewed this and is okay, so with that, I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the consent to cleanup activities. Um, on the address of twenty four eleven Pacific Street in. Do you think it's okay to just handwrite Atchison, cuz they forgot Atchison?
Sure.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the consent to cleanup activities for twenty four eleven Pacific Street.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is. Okay, and next we have county councillor with the review of Memorial Hall Agreement and constituent request to. Uh, rescind resolution number twenty twenty five fifteen fifty.
Skipping the order on that, I don't know if there's any need for you to rescind that resolution, we received a, an email from. Justin Pujan, who had been here a few weeks ago, and he did adopt the resolu- and there was a resolution of support. And he indicated that, that he was going to switch the sponsor, he had to have a governmental entity as a sponsor, and he. Going to switch to have the city be the sponsor instead of the county. I, I don't know that you need to rescind the resolution that you've adopted, I don't think it, uh. I mean, you may if you wish, but I, I don't think it has any impact on. His application or the application going through a different entity, so.
Okay, good, so, well, and it still shows that we support his efforts, do you know what the switch was?
Um, I, I think it had to do with his concern over a neighborhood revitalization program, that the county not being participating in it and. Um, he just had concerns, I think. You'd really have to ask him, but I think concerns about whether the county was going to continue to be. Uh, a supporter of the development. Incentives. Which their projects will use.
Alright, so no need to rescind on that.
Right.
No action needed, okay.
Uh, with regard to Memorial Hall lease, uh, we have, uh, Nick, Nick Redman and Travis, the correspondents are both here, Nick, of course, is the. Executive Director of the Atchison Recreation Commission and. Uh, Travis is on the. Board of Trustees for Memorial Hall. Um, we have for the first time tried to put together an agreement, uh. A lease agreement, if you will, um, for. Atchison Recreation Commission to occupy most of Memorial Hall, uh, which they have done for decades. Um, I don't think we're envisioning any big changes, um, we have. Uh, we, we had proposed having a, a one year term for that, and then we had put off when the start date was going to be, making it the beginning of the year. I think the, uh, Recreation Commission prefers to have. Uh, have this be only a six month agreement. And we can make some tweaks to what we have to make it a six month rolling. We have it be six month agreement, roll over to additional terms of six months, we could certainly do that. If that's, uh, the direction. Um, there are a couple of things that would need to be tweaked in there, like we had annual. Uh, reimbursement of the, the property insurance and. Cuz we're built on an annual basis, but the reimbursement then wouldn't be on an annual basis, because the agreement wouldn't be an annual one. Um, so there, there are a couple of tweaks, but I'm, I'm confident we can make those. Uh, utilities would be another one we have to modify slightly. And of course, and the, the gym floor, called for them to refinish the gym floor annually. Uh, that doesn't make quite enough sense that we're talking about a six month, we don't want them to have to refinish the floor every six months. So, but other than those changes, I think, uh. We could sure do an agreement that was on a six month at a time basis.
Okay, so for our calendar year budgeting, just help me understand the six months versus the twelve. Months.
So, with us starting in January next year, it gives us an opportunity to have six months of data. Uh, cuz our budget years is July one, our new budget starts July one. So you go January to July, it gives us an opportunity to. See what the income is gonna be from gym rentals, uh, because that's something we just don't know. Uh, really get down and see what our costs are as far as utilities. It's just a whole new, all new concept for everybody, and it gives us a chance to really break it down. And see where we're gonna be at by the time our new budget year opens up. So we could really plan and be more fiscally responsible within our budget.
So, I guess for me is like, I wanna be a team player and figure out how this works for all entities, but we're not budgeting for it in our budget. So, for twenty twenty six, we won't have utilities or insurance budgeted, so. As long as everybody feels comfortable that in the six months, then the next six months it'll be budgeted for and we won't have. as long as everybody feels comfortable that in the six months, then the next six months it'll be budgeted for and we won't have, you know, because we won't have that money um allocated, I guess, for our twenty twenty six budget. Um outside of the the maintenance items that you had sent over and we have within our maintenance budget.
Sure, and that's kind of another thing. We wanna make sure the maintenance of the building is gonna kind of go as planned. Uh again, it's it's a new concept for everybody, so let's let's dip our toes in instead of jumping straight in.
So is it going forward, gonna be a six-month, or is this just to align? Cause it'll never align, so it the the this trial period, what you're suggesting. Can we expect that to end then and in?
That would be open. Yeah, we we wanted to start with a six-month because it aligns within our budget here. Does that make sense to you? Yeah, we start January to July and then our our budget here goes July to June.
And if we can align it at some point, that'd be great. It never, it will.
It'll never align.
It'll never align, so I guess, I guess what I'm saying is as long as you you know, are committed, uh we I I would be open to to allowing that. It's just that going down the road, I just wanna make sure you guys are committed to actually having this agreement, because we could do this every six months. I mean, you could literally come back and say, well, we need to know now going forward, what's gonna happen from July to December, or so I I just, I mean, um I understand what you're saying, because it is new, you know, it is all completely new.
Right.
Um we're committed to our end of it. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have written the uh the contract if we weren't committed. So I can tell you from this seat right here, we are committed to what we'd say in 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 the contract, but uh if if these two uh wanna go forward for the next six months, I I I'm 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 all for it. I just I just wanna make sure that there's a commitment on the other side also to to go forward.
Sure, and from our side, it's it's a we need to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. So I think there's two sides of it. You know, we wanna make sure that it's gonna work with us.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we're at on this. It just, we're talking with the, they came up at our board meeting Monday, I think it was a good point.
Yeah, real quick, that got me thinking of another path. Um what is the opt-out clause in there?
Well, it's ninety days now, but um and one of the tweaks I was considering is to have it just a thirty day to the end of the period, the end of any term.
So I was just thinking, um if we kept our lease annual but for your budgeting purposes, cause say you get three months from July one and you're like, you should know probably by then um of the opt-out, and if you would rather do thirty days, like whatever that looks like, but it gives you I guess, cause your six months is like, what if it doesn't work, right? Then what?
Sure.
Um so it gives you that security, but also then you get to July one and you're like, oh, this is fine. We're we're booking, we're, you know, we're we're, this is working well, then you could budget for a year and a half so that we stay on. Cause I'm just asking, like, do you think after six months, you're gonna feel like this is, this is working or this isn't working? And I guess from looking at other communities, are are you exploring other avenues of like, what does this look like if it doesn't work? Um?
Uh there's always a fallback, yeah. Uh we're there. But I I think the six-month, like what our first proposal was just to start with the six-month and then everything goes in, we we move into the yearly. Like, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
Uh but again, I know in our discussions that we really I think a six-month just makes sense for us right now, uh with it being new instead of jumping in for a year. Uh then that's just our stand.
Yeah, we we could certainly, we could certainly do that and uh I I I think the uh the os- out, the opting out period was more for their benefit than ours, because if if we opted out be much more difficult for them to find a place to run their programming. We don't have that much that we do there, so if really, that's more protection for them and it's really for for the county, so. I it would take a little bit of redrafting, so I could sure have that for next week, but just have a uh have it be for a term of six months with the expectation at the end of the six months, we would go to a a year-long lease, so.
I don't know that you wanna put that in there like that. I think you give it that. My understanding is what they wanna do is they they've already budgeted, they've called out what they're gonna need out of the mill. So that and that set them from July one till next year. And their their fiscal concern is that, you know, they don't know what they'll be able to put into the budget and take care of for next year, and so they wanna have a clawback or at least an opportunity, you know, what if the world falls apart? We're not gonna have an opportunity even get that mill back or or what whatever. Yeah, they they won't have the money.
Um well, but the proposed agreement gave them the option to cancel upon ninety days notice, so. I I I think that's a phantom concern, but I I also understand that it might be an actual concern of it, so.
But I I think it's a concern and because now you've got the whole of the expense of Memorial Hall being put on the back of the four oh nine school district. And so that 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 liability is not being spread um out at all.
I don't think that's accurate.
Okay, well, explain to me in a way that that I would understand.
Well, because there are there are certainly big items that are being taken care of by the county. Um the construction of it, which has already occurred, is one of those items, but the county is also keeping the responsibility for maintenance of the big items. And to say that all, everything is placed on the back of the Recreation Commission, I don't think is accurate, but
in order for the doors to be open, the perception is to include insurance, utilities, and any of the other day-to-day costs will have to fall on the rec commission, i.e. the four oh nine school district budgeting, the the tax, the mill that comes through that. So I think their constituents are concerned long-term that that I think the hope is, is that at some point, maybe the county could afford to pick up the cost of the at of the of the insurance at the least, so that they don't have to go in an estimated, what'd you say, seventy thousand dollars? So where they've been paying somewhere about what, thirty thousand in the past? So that is more than double for them, potential costs of that, which is expanded. You saw the budget line item, expanded what they're asking for from the four oh nine school district for that. And I I just think that I don't know if that's where they wanna be for the rest of their entirety, but the hope is that maybe we could come back to a I'm getting in the weeds. My point is, I think just write it up for the six months and let them get to the to the point where they can then put it in for the budget next year, and when they feel like they're gonna have it comfortable, then they can proceed forward.
Well, yeah, that's certain, we could certainly do that.
My understanding was you're okay with the contract, the way it's written, just to change the dates. Yeah, everything else was so we just wanted to go to six, everything else we are.
So I'd like to direct a question to our trustee, um Travis, as our trustee of Memorial Hall and hearing that that Action Rec is always having a backup plan, right? So six months, they have a contingency plan. They might decide, you know what, we're gonna go to the school district and run our programs, because we don't have to, it it aligns, right? It aligns with four oh nine. Um what's the trustee's backup plan for for utilizing Memorial Hall?
Um I don't, I don't know that this one we have one. Um obviously, we don't have a a way to leverage any funds. We can't call a mill out and ask for support. And so it it falls directly on 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 the responsibility of county. If a tenant like the rec mission were to vacate space, we know we need to keep the utilities on. Otherwise, the floor buckles, it's not usable, et cetera, et cetera. You 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 see.
No, absolutely. I just wasn't sure from the management aspect of the trustees, what is it your role to find a a tenant, or would it be the Board of County Commission to put it out? Like, I just because at the end of the day, we all want to see that building downtown utilized, right? It's a, it's a gem. And and yeah, absolutely. So just having that conversation after hearing, you know, everybody's exploring often and dipping their toes. Where are we at?
I don't have an answer for you, no. I mean, the the way it works now and the way it had worked, it worked.
Yeah.
And that's changing now, and we have to kind of figure that moving forward, figure out what that looks like moving forward. And that's us. We just want to have an opportunity to to see how it work. Um you know, that's I feel like we stepped up and and are willing to help out and we showed that. Um and then just the six-month thing just made more sense for our.
And then the next, then the twenty seven, we would do annual. We are not opposed to annual, you just want that first year to be a six-month.
Correct.
Okay, so for our.
And and it would be, I know, it'd be twenty six, twenty seven. Right. They're just asking to get this written first year to July or whatever.
Okay, and so for our standpoint, it would probably be smart of us to budget for six months of utilities and insurance, just in case we have them say they vacate. We wanna keep our utilities on to our trustee's point. You can't shut it down. Um I I think that would be responsible on our behalf. I don't know where you guys.
Use it, you don't use it.
Where you guys land on that. I mean, because if we don't have the money budgeted, we know how slim things are that I don't wanna not have an option to keep the air at least to where you don't have damage.
Right, that's how does that look for us to, if we budget, we're 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 budgeting the entire year, not not in six months. So then how does that look for us come? Why? Then what, where does that funding come from if we're not budgeted for it?
Well, so that's why I'm thinking for twenty twenty six, we would budget for six months of it, just in case.
You mean first six months, which is the contract?
No, the second six months. That way, if they get to July one and say, okay, we're given ninety days notice, we've realized.
Right, uh so you're saying not to change what we already have, but okay, yeah, fine, that's fine.
I just.
I agree with that.
I think we have to allocate for that six months utilities and insurance.
Oh, yeah.
So that we're covered.
Earlier, you had used the term clawback, and I've only ever seen that used when you're actually receiving money back that you've already expended. Is that an error? I mean.
I don't know, um I just talked, I I do remember saying it, I don't recall what. I think what they're, they wanna position a more, if they're in trouble, they want a tenable position. So the clawback term that I use, meaning they would have a place fiscally that they could pull back to. Like, that's what I was probably referring to.
Oh, like a okay, so it's not actually getting money back.
Just a a pullback to position, it was dependable, so to speak.
Maybe pardon me for saying so, but it seems like you're a lot more of a partner with with them than being uh on board with the county on this.
No, no, it's it's what Casey said, we're all in this together. And I I I'm trying, I wanted to work for them, because we don't want them to go anywhere. And if this is what they need to succeed, then I'm gonna help them do that. Because it is, then we're back into the boat where we don't have it open, we don't have anybody down there can open the doors and make it accessible to the community. So I I wanted to work. I wanted to work for them, and we, when that came up, that made sense to me. I know it'd be difficult for me to budget out six months past uh money I don't know I'm going to have. And and I I don't know entirely how their budgeting works. I do realize if they don't expend everything that they say they're going to, they don't get to keep it. It doesn't roll over. It just stays in the funds uh and it it and then rolls over to their next year, but from from the four oh nine school district side, doesn't go into their pockets, they don't sit on the extra money. So um they they'll be at a flat zero at the end of their fiscal year, and I and I understand that. They don't, they don't have funds that they can carry over year to year, like my organization or even the county.
So I'd like to move forward with your request uh that we you know, that we hold you to six months and then, but I I would like to have regular uh oh, just just connection with you all, because I I I just I mean, I I just throughout this whole process, process, I just don't know that there's there's a lot of uh faith in us from from your end. I I, so I I would go forward with the six-month request on but I but I I would love to come down regularly, if I could go to a budget, one of, or not a budget, but one of your uh meetings, uh board meetings as District One Commissioner, I'd love to sit in, because if if it's a trust issue uh I I think I can speak to that. So I would love to.
That sounds great.
Do that.
When you say he's partnering with me more than you, I feel like we all partner together, like uh I feel like we're all one day working together. I'm not against anybody, uh but I'm trying to think in the best interest of the Recreation Commission.
Yep.
And I understand you're trying to think in the best interest of the county. But we're still all partners. I don't see any division. I don't see any need for us not to be.
Yeah, and to to the trustee's defense, they have came before the board historically with needs and and not been just, yeah, they haven't been fulfilled. So I I see, I see both sides of 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 this entire conversation and yeah. At the end of the day, we just need to find something that works for the community, that's great.
It's new, and I feel like this could be a good starting point.
I agree.
Yep.
So moved, do I have a second to alter for the first year of a six-month term? Um and then annual or after that?
Just for for my clarity, so you want a six-month, just at least with the six-month term with no automatic rollover to uh an additional term, and then we would need to before June thirtieth, have a a an annual agreement at that point that might roll over year to year.
I agree, we should sit down before July one and come up, you know what I mean, like.
So for your work in simplification, I think is what he's saying is, if that automatic rollover like, we still sit down, we still say, okay, this is working, as long as it's not not working, then it just rolls over and then we revisit it in January. You know that you're budgeting annually in July first and and that's.
So as far as the role, are you saying roll over another six months?
Yes.
Or are we saying roll over?
That same year, which I think that's where you wanna be eventually.
Yeah, I think so. I agree.
Yeah.
Well, I I I didn't.
I guess it's half one sixty, half those and the other, was it six one, half those and the other? I mean, either it's gonna be off on your timeline, or it's off on our time.
Correct.
So uh
That's your point.
This initial term, though, I'm of of six months, at the end of that six month is the expectation that there would be no agreement going forward, that we'd have to come up with a new one. Or that it would roll over for an additional six-month term, or they would roll over to a one-year term at that point.
If you're asking, in my opinion, would be that it would roll over to a one-year term at that, yeah.
Right, yeah, I um I'll I'll need to make some changes, but we can sure do that.
Were we able to get that to align to our budget cycle?
No, I I mean.
I guess it doesn't matter. We we manipulate it easier on ours, right? So, I mean, with our staff, we can just.
Yes, you could have it start in April when it's off on both of our.
Well, but actually, it it would actually be better to renew on ARC's schedule, because we would know we're renewed prior to our budget and finalization, so I like your schedule better. I think having your stance July, like in July, helps us to know what we're doing for the following year. Um so.
So how does it ever align, though? I'm trying to figure it out.
It definitely.
It doesn't. I mean, we know what we need from them.
Thirty days before you.
Yeah.
We'll budget ours annually.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Well, our our budgeting will stay, you know, January.
Yeah.
Yeah, December thirty.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
We haven't voted on anything.
Well, we're going to have to bring the proposed agreement back to you.
Okay, so we'll put it in next week.
Yeah.
We'll have it on the agenda next week to sign up, dated. We can circulate that amongst all of us prior to Tuesday too, right? So you guys can see, yeah.
That's that's even better, that'll make it go quicker.
Awesome, perfect. Thanks, guys. Okay, next we have Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent, consideration notice award to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six asphalt and discussion on four we stop three twenty-six and King.
Good morning. Sent you all the bid tabulation of the bid of the asphalt patch in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh engineered estimate was three fifty-three, three hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred. Approved paving was two hundred fifty-two thousand three hundred and forty. Venice asphalt was three hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-three seventy-nine. And Little Joe's was two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five, and I am wanting to sign, maybe or I met my recommendation to go with Little Joe's at two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and thirty-five, and I've talked to them and uh talked about And uh talked about. The flagging and everything, and if we have any other deterioration. Uh, if they would be willing to help us out on that after winter. And they can start, they would like to start some of it this fall. Uh, first of May was was a deadline I'd like to have it done by, but some of the asphalt plants don't open up until May in the spring. So, but I would, I would recommend going with Little Joe's.
Look for a motion to support the recommendation by our Road and Bridge Superintendent to accept the notice of award to Little Joe's Asphalt Incorporated. Uh, for our twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six asphalt patching program in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars. Uh, and allow the chair to sign. We did second it. All those in favor say aye.
And and those roads that we are, uh that's on this is Broadway Street in Lancaster, Greeley at Paradise Lake. Three twenty six east of Douglas. Edwards between two eighty sixth and three eighteen and three eighteenth between Douglas and Edwards.
Um, question on patching harvest, those per affairs, are they, are any gonna be?
They'll be, they'll be a. Traffic control, flagging, uh unfortunately. Uh, being you brought that up, we have stuff we have to do, and we're gonna have to be putting some tubes in also on Ottawa Road as soon as they get here. And we're gonna do the best we can, but for us to get everything done on the time we matter, there's gonna be, people are gonna have to drive around some. And I hate that, that we can't wait till spring on those, but. Uh Broadway during harvest, I know that we can't be on Broadway during harvest. But we can do some of the other ones.
Speaking of Ottawa Road, cause I just triggered a, on the culverts that have been replaced. Um, is there gonna be something done to that road prior to harvest to help where they settled in?
I've already, have you drove that?
Uh, not this morning. Call this morning, worried about it and just saying.
So we've, we've uh chip sealed the top of them, smoothed them best we can. They're gonna continue to settle. That's why we did it. As early as we did, and we're gonna continually do the best we can. You know, if the. If the traffic will slow down a little bit, I don't think it'll be as bad as if they're running fifty five miles an hour. But that settling process is gonna happen, and that's why we. We uh put them in when we did, especially the big ones.
What is the speed limit on that road?
It's fifty five, but I've got uh I put signs up there, rough road, uh thirty five miles an hour to try to get people to. To try to slow down. Uh, we we wanna work with everybody, but also uh we still have things we have to get done. And there may be some inconveniences. And then while we're on this topic, uh anyone that's listening. The work going on fifty nine, they're east of Cummings. There are loaded grain trucks driving on Neo Show and two fifty fourth. And uh they are going to ruin our road. So as soon as harvest gets going, uh I've talked to uh. Jack and Toby, they're gonna try to help us out there. But uh please, please remember, if you run that, you're costing all of us. Uh, a lot of money to keep that up. Cause it's a concern.
They're utilizing it to bypass the.
Yes, they don't wanna, they don't wanna wait for the light. Well, uh, I've ran, I've followed one truck and called the company that he worked for, and they're not gonna use that anymore. But uh that's something that's a big concern, and it's also gonna be bigger here about the first of November, when they start the other project at two sixty two. Then those uh two fifty fourth, those age Osborne, two sixty two are gonna take a beating. Uh, we put the signs up, local traffic only. But we can't stop everybody. But I just, I think we we here understand. What it will do to those roads, but. If you're in county, please do the best you can to stay off of them. Out of county, we can't control those, so. That's a big concern of mine. The four way stop at three twenty six in Kingman is something that's been brought up before and. The sign project was done in in two thousand seventeen. It doesn't mean the stop signs weren't there before. Uh, I just talked to the the sheriff and he doesn't remember anything. He said he's gonna look back, but he doesn't remember anything. Significant happening. So uh, in case most of you don't know, Kingman is a paved road that runs north and south and three twenty six. Runs east and west, and there's a four way stop. And uh. It just doesn't make sense to a lot of, a lot of people why we have that stop sign there, why they shouldn't be able to go through. And uh that's been questioned, and I'll look into it a little bit more and and see what you guys wanna do.
I'll see if I can contact some locals, maybe some of the people around there petition for it at some point.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I don't know where all the records went, but we only have. Basically what we've done. Well, I'm serious. There, that's why uh my office staff and everything, we have a record on everything. Uh, we have some records, but we don't have everything. So. But everything that we're doing is recorded and put where it needs to be. That's why I can come up with dates and everything on when we've done things.
It was me that uh kinda done the inquiry on that, cause it's never made sense to me. But I'm definitely open to the idea that there was a purpose at one time that there was. Uh, maybe it was speed check or something there to just to get the traffic to slow down. So I'll see if I can contact some locals and find out.
And and one other thing I wanna touch on earlier about the, talking to the local contractors. Uh, about the grading, that also gives us, as in the commission and and myself. The opportunity to look and see what that's gonna cost us, so that we can try to figure out if it's more than we can. Is there some other thing we can possibly do? Uh, stay within the requirements of the city and and K D H E. Or something to lessen the cost.
Oh, I get that. I I guess from my brain standpoint is like, we're paying this company to do those things that we.
And then they're doing them. They're the ones that's sending the information to those contractors. They're the ones wanting to talk to those contractors to see. What what the market is here for that work. So yes, they are doing it.
Well, that's what, just the difference of if we we could be doing the same thing without paying someone, so that.
But that's already in their, their scope of work. Yes, it's not anything outside of the scope of work.
So, and could those scopes of work be, I guess I'm learning for for future negotiated or we don't.
It's awfully hard to negotiate with the engineering services. Because they charge pretty much the same with everybody else depending upon what they're doing. So. For me to go in there and try, the only thing you're gonna do is cut services to get them to come down. Because when you, when you send out, when you send that out to all the engineering firms, and then the commission votes. On which engineering firm they wanted, we've accepted, this is the people we're going with. They have prices, and that's what their prices are. It's, it's not like. I mean, you just can't go up to them and say, hey, will you do it for five thousand dollars? I think that's too much. It doesn't, doesn't seem to work, because then they can't be fair with everybody else when they're, when they're putting their costs out there.
So it's just the scope of services prior to R F P that we need to maybe nail down?
Yeah, if there's something we don't, we've, we think or we have someone who can do it or someone else. I'm all for it, but finding those people uh would be the main thing. But yes, it would be. In that before the contract signed, so. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next is notices and communication. Our budget hearing is going to be held in the commission room. Um, this Sunday, um at the Axon County Courthouse at ten fifteen A M, September twenty first. Um, just reiterating that uh we. Learned um of a new statute by our new county clerk this year. That we have to be ten days prior to the October first, and we have to publish in our local um. Publication, which is Axon Daily Globe, ten days prior to our hearing, which fell on September eleventh um last Thursday. So fast forward ten days lands us on the twenty first, giving us the ten days prior to October first. So. Um, we've remedied this situation for the future. Um, our finance directors contacted the state to add that to the budget calendar. Um, and our clerk and our finance director will be working together um in the future to outline all of our dates. Way in advance so that we're all on the same page and know when and what to expect. So just wanna make sure that we're explaining that of. Of why we will be meeting um for our budget hearing on on Sunday. Um, no introductions or considerations of resolutions. Um, we have a ten minute attorney client with. A H R Finance and Commission and County Counselor. Oh, sorry. Ten minutes attorney client with County Counselor, Commission, H R and Finance. Yes. Uh, Pat, what subject do you want on that?
I think attorney client is all you need to say.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners. Recession to executive session at eleven forty two A M. For consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship. Is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. Those present will be three commissioners. County uh counselor, H R and finance director.
All seconded, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Alright, we are back in open session and going to go into an executive session. Um, with the treasurer, non-elected personnel services on subject, subject of positions, twenty five minutes. With Board of County Commission, Treasurer, County Counselor, Finance and H R. Sorry, did I say?
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at eleven fifty three. A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dot four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in twenty five minutes. In the commission room, the courthouse basement, and those present will be um three commissioners. Uh, County Counselor, H R, Finance and the Treasurer.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero.
I'm good either way. Whatever you think, I'm I'm okay.
Well, if you two are good, I can be good. I just wondered.
Are we gonna do it just for five or do we? Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the previous uh executive session by ten minutes, same parameters.
Second, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. So we'll just, um, Jack mentioned that he didn't think he would take an hour. So what happens?
Then we just sit here. We should do forty five minutes then. Cause we can't adjourn out of one early. So if he doesn't think he needs an hour, if he thinks he needs a half an hour, we could do or forty five minutes, whatever he decides. Which it's twelve thirty, cause we'll want one after.
Well. Are you? Let's not do that. She told that.
Testicle customers.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Carrie gave you a huge shout out yesterday morning. How many G? He's a ball eating champ. You beat Curtis and who was the third one? Oh, yeah, that was right. Yeah, Carrie had a big thing on yesterday morning, and I was cracking up, cause I just turned it on to hear that, and it was like, Sheriff. Did they do, where they do that at? Oh, at the old or like.
They were even parked like, cause I went down from that. They were even parked up on Fletcher, like all they go on it.
That's awesome. Is that, was that the, was it like an A T V ride or just that?
No, it's just that.
Uh, it's on the agenda. How much time do you need, Jack?
I said an hour max, but I don't know if it'll take that long.
He said an hour?
I'm saying an hour.
And it's three commissioners, H R, finance director.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at twelve thirty five. P M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and the board come out of executive session. In one half hour in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be three commissioners, H R, finance, the sheriff. And County Counselor.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session. Is there a need for additional time? You're gonna be none?
I don't know. I'd do fifteen minutes.
Okay, fifteen minutes, same parameters.
Yeah, I guess I'll make the motion to uh recess back. Yeah, I guess I'll make the motion to, uh, recess back into executive session to continue the previous one for fifteen minutes.
Second, move and seconded, all those in favor say aye. We, that's good with the timeline still, do, an hour.
And same group?
Yeah, these three, us, um, and then you can just use the same parameters we just did, or like the non-elected.
Okay, I'll move the board of county commissioners, excuse me, recess into executive session at one twenty-three. PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B. And that the purpose of employee. Privacy rights of the employee, and that the board come out of executive session in one hour in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be. Uh, three commissioners, HR, finance, county counselor. I guess that's it.
Second, it's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session, um. Anything else we need to touch on before the last thing on here is adjourning into budget workshop?
That's perfect.
So.
That's actually.
Is, is there anything else we need to, uh, discuss or look at next week's agenda before we go, um? Oh, reminder, we're gonna be here on Sunday.
Right. Ten fifteen AM.
Ten fifteen AM. Sorry, I'm looking, there's nothing for next week other than invocation with Mr. Port mode. Oh, I take that back, there's an election demo at one o'clock with clear ballot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so other than that, that's all we got.
No, I just wanna know what's happened, for sure, if anything's changed with me. So what I sent in as a change is okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cuz I haven't spoke to anyone yet.
No.
And I wanna do that today.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um, we're sixteen, so no care yet, and, um. Anything else that we need before our call for a motion to adjourn into budget workshop?
Do we have an agenda for Sunday?
Oh, good call.
All we're gonna do is go into session, do the budget hearing, and that's it.
And it's a plan then, at that moment. You will say where we ended up, how we got there.
Budget.
But then you'll explain, like, will you explain on behalf, so like at our R and R hearing, like, here's wh- why we're here. And this is, you know, what you got, and then from that. Where we get from what we certified to the public, to where we land at our budget hearing, how we got there.
Yeah, I can do something like that.
Are you gonna be here in person?
Do you want a formal agenda?
Yeah.
Is it the same, um?
Yeah.
As our R and R hearing, as far as open, open the hearing, close the hearing, and so, public comment.
Would be during that time.
So I think probably at the beginning to say where we were, where we are, so that anybody that does wanna speak.
Open the hearing, but, uh, approve the budget, close the hearing.
Yeah, but for public comment.
No, I'm just. Those are the thick three.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you don't have, this is the one where it doesn't matter, you just have to have comment at your hearing, you can adopt the budget.
I feel like it's probably very important. That we convey to the public, that like. Because for the public, right, that doesn't know the process, that sees our budget hearing. They think they're gonna show up and tell us like, that's unacceptable, we want it reduced. But this is the, literally the deadline of adoption, so like, that was the opportunity at the R and R hearing.
Sure.
This is the budget hearing to say, okay, we heard you, and this is our finalized budget, um. So I guess I just don't know how to convey that to the public, because I've read some of the comments, and people think that it's that platform to come and say. Like additional reductions, and we don't have that.
They could still say that, but.
Okay.
Sure, you don't have to do anything about it.
But we can't, right? Because we're.
Technically could.
At that.
They could decide right then and there.
Okay, okay, I.
Yeah, you could do that.
And then it takes you time to do all the refiguring.
You just have to sit here until that's done.
Okay, I just wanted to understand how that worked, because.
It's four o'clock in the afternoon.
I mean, maybe someone's gonna come in with a million dollars and be like, here. We want to save. For a hundred thousand to save us.
Yes, cuz you have to.
We need, uh, to vote by vote.
Have that sheet? There's a sheet that you'll get, that they'll sign.
Yeah.
The body, and then you. Can they vote to adopt that, and then you work on that, and sign, they sign it later? I mean, they, maybe could, but we haven't done that in the past, they sign it that day.
That was an R and R thing.
Sorry. Cuz I don't need it till October. Right. Alright, so, so let's go over this real quick then, so you want call to order invocation, or you wanna adjourn and do that workshop?
Oh, it doesn't matter, we can just do it, I mean, you already have it.
Budget allegiance, and then are you gonna do a budget explanation?
Well, we immediately, I, I mean, you'll open the meeting, and then do, and it'll be open until the very last thing, I suppose.
So you want to open the hearing before you guys adopt the explanation?
We'll probably open the meeting before we do the flag salute.
So just call to order, we'll call invocation, public, pledge allegiance. Open public hearing after I call to order, just.
Yeah.
But what you did at R and R, you did call to order invocation, pledge allegiance, you did an R and R explanation, you did commissioner comments, and then you opened the hearing.
Okay, now, I kinda like your thought of open the hearing. Before Mark's explanation. And then allow public comment, and then vote to adopt. If we wanna. What that looks like.
Do you actually vote to adopt during the hearing, or after the hearing's closed?
Either one. Doesn't, doesn't.
I like doing it during, makes me feel better, it makes sense to me. Go ahead and adopt the budget, then close the hearing, but if it doesn't matter, I guess it didn't matter.
Uh, and if we're using that same template, let's not forget to update Memorial Hall through the courthouse.
Already done.
Okay, cool.
But it's, I'm having a change of.
Alright.
So you want open budget hearing? Not just put closed budget hearing, you have to do what I think that's due, that's what we did. It did public comments and everything. If you want, you don't want commercial comments or anything anymore? Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything else in, before calling for a motion to adjourn? Okay, I'd like for a motion to adjourn into budget workshop with the finance director.
So move, say.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.